All right, we'll call the Stevens Point area Public School District Special Meeting Workshop of the Board on Thursday, December 19th, 2013 to order. Barb, roll call and verification form, please.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
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 Mr. Rothman.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Mr. Dibley.
You.
Eric.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
All right, the new business tonight is the compensation study report. Charlie, podium is yours.
And Barb, I need to recuse myself. If you could put that in the notes, please, thank you.
Aye.
Why do you need to recuse yourself?
Because they're co-mainly...
Oh. You have an interest in this?
Well, good evening, it's nice to be with you and greetings to everybody. I know this is a busy time of the year and, and I would have suggested that the best way for me to start this presentation would just say, well, in conclusion, and everybody could go do something else tonight, but this is really, obviously, a very, very critical item. And we've spent a fair amount of time putting together some information for you. And then at the conclusion of the presentation, we will make a couple of recommendations to you on further action items and see if we can continue to, to move this along. To sort of recap, when I was before you several weeks ago talking about the non-exempt staff, board staff positions, the feeling of the board was, let's try to get our arms wrapped around the entire problem and come forward with something that made sense as, as a, a uniform approach to compensation. And I took on a couple of assignments for you to gather some information in order to make some recommendations to you on how we might proceed. And so that's what I'm going to work through tonight. Actually, there are four of us that have worked on, on this project in some form. Katie McCluskey is, is with me tonight, Katie is sitting over here. Katie and I have worked together for about twenty years. She's a grad student of mine in, in compensation twenty years ago and had more recently been a staff person with the Racine Board of Education. So she's got a lot of this education stuff running through her veins. Brian Ronk is our data analyst. He's a master's degree industrial relations student and very experienced and he did a lot of the data work. And then Patrick Glenn joined our firm this summer and, and I use him to bounce ideas off of. And Patrick is the current president of the Wisconsin Public Employer Labor Relations Association and on the National Board. So this is a pretty experienced group of folks that are, are dealing with your information. And I think it's, it's important for you to know that, that, that we really take this as, as a very, very important assignment. So the, the question here is, what are the major concerns with the district's compensation program? And how does the district's compensation plan compare to the market? That was really the first task that we, we were asked to address is, and when we talked to you as a board about the major policy concerns, raised with you three major concerns. One is, what is the market we're comparing ourselves to? Secondly, what position do you wish to take in that market? Or can you take in that market is also a valid question financially. And then fourth, in the future, how do you get a raise around here? You know, how are we going to structure the pay plan and management on a go-forward basis? So in conclusion then, what we will get to is our recommendations on what we think the district needs to do to improve its compensation program. So what we did is we developed in our overall assignment compensation data for non-exempt staff. The board response was to request a more comprehensive analysis and conduct this workshop, that's why we're here tonight. We were asked to review trends in Wisconsin K-12 districts to see what are other people doing. And the reason for that, in, in large part, is because one of the, there are many things that happened as a result of Act 10, but one of them is that our traditional bargaining laws no longer apply. And so things that we had done through collaboratively, collaboratively, through collective bargaining, we were now precluded from doing through the bargaining process to the point of formal bargaining to reach agreements and so forth. And a lot of districts were faced with very serious financial challenges as a result of changes to both Act 10 and Act 32. And as a result, everybody, and we have four hundred school districts in the state, we probably have four hundred different responses in terms of what to do. And so what we wanted to determine is, is there some sort of a trend here that we should be paying attention to? I don't think it's a case of, well, just because somebody else is doing it, that's what we ought to do. I mean, you've had a reputation and as I've learned to see yourself as being a leader. And so I would assume that you would like to be a leader in how you develop a new compensation system as well. So we developed a market analysis for both teachers and administrators to complement the analysis that we had done for the non-exempt staff and then recommending next steps on what do we do. So that's where we are. Well, how did we get here? You know, for forty years, teacher collective bargaining really drove school district, K-12 school district compensation systems. And primarily, those schedules were seniority-based compensation, where you'd start low and earn more based upon additional education and service. It's a system that was created post-World War II, probably when I was a, a kid in grammar school in the fifties. And, and the notion was that, that we can't pay you much, but if you'll stay for a career and you make this a career over a period of time, you'll move up. And so this lane and step program was created. And I would suggest that we dig back far enough, we would find that that's an administration creation. That was, that was done pre-collective bargaining. But collective bargaining institutionalized it. They made it a permanent part until Act 10, a permanent part of our landscape. And that's how we managed compensation. And there was minimal consideration of competitive pay on some sort of a market basis. In fact, most collective bargaining agreements that I'm familiar with, I think including yours, said that, you know, if we hire you from the outside, we're going to severely discount the amount of experience that you have and place you in the pay plan lower down, you've got to earn your way back up. And as a result, there wasn't really a lot of active market movement. And our focus has been, you know, you would get hired in a district and you would tend to stay for a career if you stayed in teaching. Now, there were exceptions to that, but I think that that is, was sort of the overriding model. And fundamentally, the leadership of the organization, the principals, assistant principals, administrators and so forth, their compensation and in many cases their increases or their contracts were tied to teacher pay. Because quite often, we promoted from out of the ranks of teachers into administration, it was a logical thing to do. And so there had to be a relationship built between the two levels. In terms of non-exempt staff, benefits were linked primarily to the teachers because they were essentially the engine that pulled the train. Under our labor statutes, no creation of, of, of our relationship with, with our unions. But the statutes themselves, although they said that arbitrators in dispute cases were to pay attention to local labor market conditions, in practice, that was ignored. And so essentially, the basis of comparison in collective bargaining would have been other schools. Therefore, the outcry, if we come forward and you say, for example, well, we should compare custodians as example or food service workers or secretaries to what's happening in the Stevens Point labor market. As you would expect, there'd be a human cry that says, now, wait a minute, you always compared us only to other school districts, we're unique. But I think the reality is, while there may be some uniqueness in the work, the truth of the matter is, the fact of the matter is that the real analysis there is based upon local labor market conditions. And there really was no systematic examination of internal equity within those pay structures because they were, that was well-handled in collective bargaining. And if there's one thing I can tell you from forty years of collective bargaining personally and forty years of wage analysis and doing this kind of work, issues of internal equity are not paramount in collective bargaining. Collective bargaining is a political process, it's not a logical process. And so when we step in now into a lot of environments, particularly with support staff types of positions, we find out there's just a lot of anomalies in terms of how people are paid relative to each other. And when we do a systematic study of job responsibilities and we objectively value the internal relationships between jobs, we find that it may be disparities, not unlike the one we pointed out to you, we feel that currently exists between special ed assistants as an example and other positions within the district. They weren't necessarily treated favorably either in collective bargaining or outside of collective bargaining because we had a different way of managing compensation through collective bargaining. So that's sort of the scene we find ourselves in. Acts 10 and 32 ended traditional bargaining, there's no interest arbitration, an extremely restricted bargaining scope, base wages and safety, base wages in a very narrow definition, constricted by the change in the cost of living as determined by the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission. And I would suggest the, absolutely the most changing thing about Act 10 was not the change in the bargaining law. Essentially, it was how it altered the political environment by requiring union certification and dues check-off, the end of dues check-off. And that is the one that I find across the state is changing the landscape in terms of, of bargaining power and bargaining authority and, and how it's just driving unions crazy in terms of how to represent employees and management as to who represents who and who doesn't. Do we talk to the folks who are paying union dues? Are they in or they out, et cetera, et cetera? And so we've got an, an environment that just continues to, to change before our eyes. Furthermore, there are new economic realities, the state economy is rocked. It's coming back in some areas of the state faster than others. There was a piece that I believe was in the Milwaukee paper a couple of weeks ago that identified that there really are six economies or eight existing in the state of Wisconsin, and this is sort of a unique one. Milwaukee's unique and Madison's unique, et cetera, and they're coming back at different paces. The impact of Acts 32 on terms of state financing is, I understand it, your district suffered a $4 million permanent loss in revenue. So what the legislature said basically is, well, we're going to take your money away, we're going to give you the tools to cut your costs. And the tools you're going to use to cut your costs are going to be on employees. They're going to pay their pension, there'll be other changes and so forth. And then with the economy what it is, you also found yourself in an environment where you had been able to pass referenda in the past that now the local referenda are much more difficult to pass here and elsewhere. And then when you add to that, the fact that the external scene has changed so much in terms of educational accountability, how you have to account to outside parties for failing students or students who aren't, who aren't doing well in the classroom has permanently altered the workplace for the teachers themselves. And it was done without the addition of resources. So this is just, you know, when you step back and you, and you, you know, you get away from the fray a little bit and you kind of, you know, you do something like what we're doing, you just stand back and say, okay, what changed? Well, it was a lot, it was a number of different things. Probably permanently. Now, bargaining may change again. And there are lots of folks that think that, you know, we haven't seen the end of, of where we are in terms of, of the maturation of that process. But I think it's highly doubtful that interest arbitration will come back. I don't see that happening. And the state was never willing to do it to itself. I suspect they're probably not going to do it to us again. But I don't know what replaces it. We're certainly not going to be in an environment where we don't talk to our employees. You know, I've said this in a number of occasions, that, look, you know, maybe bargaining went away, but there's no way you're going to run a public institution, whether it's a county, a city, the state or school district, without having meaningful dialogue for the people who are providing the work. Because to a very large extent, they own that work because they're providing, they, they are the folks that are there providing the services, which is to your customers, which are the students in the district. So dialogue has got to exist in a meaningful way. So your responses to these changes, I identify as follows. You had failed referenda. You went through substantial cost-cutting due to these referenda. You cut sixty teaching and administrative positions. Cut the hours of educational assistance in half. Cost-cutting due to Acts 10 and 32. Your pay plans were abolished or frozen. Employees to pay half their pension. You reduced your retiree health plan provisions. Employee health insurance contributions were increased and you eliminated paid long-term care insurance. That's a lot of changes. All of which I suggest were necessary, although reasonable people, I suppose, could argue about the mix and the nature of it. But I think everybody understands that there was a, a cost problem that had to be resolved. You can't run on a deficit. In addition, the district has the burden of paying teacher retiree health premiums that were negotiated fair and square in former agreements but unfunded. And that's a $2.5 million annual contribution approximately now for a period of time. And that's chilling because that's equivalent to approximately ten percent of the teaching payroll. So a former unfunded promise is now an anchor that you're dragging along behind you. And we can argue about whether or not ending that relationship was good, bad or otherwise, but the fact of the matter is, you're now paying the bill and absolutely none of that money is going to the welfare of today's students or the welfare of today's employees. And that's the way it is. Now, the good news is, you're doing something about it. There are other places that are struggling more than you are with the same problem. Places like Detroit, San Diego, Stockton, California, San Jose, et cetera, et cetera. The good news is, you know, and, and now people don't necessarily appreciate this because if you don't travel around, you don't get it. But the reality is, the Wisconsin retirement system is, is just golden. I mean, it is just a rock-solid retirement system because it was well-funded, well-taken care of. And, you know, that is, is just absolutely a godsend in this environment. You actually can expect to get a retirement check. So, kind of getting a sense of what the challenges were before I, we concluded, we needed to talk to some folks. I, I, I don't like standing off from things, I'd rather get down and roll my sleeves up and talk to people and say, I got to get some people in the room and I got to hear from them as to how they see life. So we asked the district to do a random selection, there's five hundred, approximately five hundred teachers in that group. We hadn't talked with them. And we said, listen, we'd ask employees to fill out questionnaires and so forth, but we hadn't any dialogue, meaningful dialogue with, with the, the teaching group. So we asked for a ten percent sample to be drawn at random, a structured random sample so that we were appropriately representing people from, from secondary, middle and, and elementary education. And we conducted five, I conducted five focus sessions, about, about an hour long with these fifty teachers. I did three board sessions, two in person and one on the phone and was able to talk with five of you anyway. Did a session for administrators that the cabinet did not attend, and then I did a session for the cabinet. I discussed the status of the current pay system. You know, we're not here to redesign education, we're here to redesign the pay plan. So I tried to keep it, you know, as focused as I could, but you can't talk about one sometimes without talking about the other. And developed and tested the major themes that were coming out of this with the focus groups. And I want to review that information with you tonight. I started the focus groups by putting this up on the board at the front of the meeting room. I wanted to know what the current distribution was of pay on an FTE basis within the district. And so I developed a chart here, table, in $10,000 increments and how many staff currently, based upon payroll, fell in those groups. And as you can see, you know, this is, this is your newest group of folks, those are the folks that you hire. And there are approximately a hundred and forty of them, or about twenty-eight percent of the total, it's a big group. The next group up, these are folks that have been here a while now, yet remembering that the way we hired people was based upon education and the way we paid them over time was based upon education and length of service. There are about fourteen percent in that group. Twenty-five percent in the next highest category. And the highest category is sixty-five to seventy-five thousand, and there's a couple slightly over seventy-five thousand. Is eight, is a third. Now, here's your challenge. First challenge is, how do you move somebody from here and get them up higher? That's one challenge. The enormous challenge is, this group, sooner than not, are all going to retire. And this group's going to get a lot bigger. And if this group doesn't see a way to get to that group, they're going to get picked off. Because now, in post-Act 10, people are stealing teachers from each other. They're recruiting. I was with one district that we're working on outside of, of Madison and they said flat out, the Madison School District is in poaching their teachers right and left. And because now that you can make offers based upon need, perceived skill and experience, you don't have to start people down at the bottom, you can bring them in at other points in the pay plan. But as I'll stress in a moment, that creates problems of its own. So where there previously hadn't been an active market, in my opinion, for experienced teachers, now there is a very active market. And the farther we get from Act 10 in each succession of hiring cycle, the more aggressive I think that's going to become. And when you couple that with the fact, if, as the housing market continues to improve, what's the biggest barrier to moving and taking a job in another community? Well, there really are two. One is, can I sell my house? And the other is, can whoever, if we're traveling as couples, can whoever else I'm traveling with also find a job? And as the economy improves, there will be more and more of those opportunities and we'll see more mobility in the labor market. So, what were the major themes that emerged from the focus groups? These are my words, not theirs. I listened to them, we talked about things that were on their mind. And then I produced, I think after the third focus group, a list of seven observations, themes that I was hearing based upon what they were telling me. And this is in no necessary order of priority, they're numbered one to seven, but that's just for purposes of reference. And I'm going to deal detail, go through them in detail. One, workload increasing. Two, less focus on teaching. Three, a lack of trust and respect. Four, internal pay inequity. Five, financial uncertainty. Six, diminished voice. And seven, a lack of transparency. Let's talk about this workload thing. What seems to be happening, and this was, came through pretty consistently, and by the way, the way I did this, once I had surfaced the seven themes, I then brought them back to the next two focus groups and said, the three groups here before you, this is what seemed to emerge, do you agree with this? And we talked it through and refined the list and so forth. And then I did the same thing with the administrative group and with the cabinet as well. And their affirmation, their conclusion was, yeah, I think you got it. Doesn't mean there can't be something else, doesn't mean it can't be stated differently, but I think the basic themes are accurate. What's happening is, is that your teachers are increasingly required to spend time responding to the needs of underachieving students. Think of words like, no child left behind. And that has all kinds of record-keeping requirements to it and time. And the belief is that this emphasis will only increase as regulatory requirements become greater. In addition, as the base of knowledge in the world increases and students advance, the teaching content has to be changed accordingly. There's more to teach. An old lesson plan may not work. There's new stuff. And the kids are brighter. I have a seven-year-old, seven, a seven-year-old granddaughter in second grade who's reading at a fifth-grade level. That's a challenge. I also have a five-year-old granddaughter with Down Syndrome who's a special needs kid. That's a different kind of challenge. And a two-year-old who thinks she's thirteen. At least seven. So the world that they're learning from, what they're learning is stuff I probably learned in, you know, I Got It at All in fifth and sixth grade, you know, and these kids are, they're so far advanced. And I would think that as a teacher, that is such a demand on, on a teacher to, you know, keep retraining yourself and, and, and relearning material and integrating that material into your teaching. It's got to be a tremendous challenge in an environment where you're giving more attention, inappropriately, but more attention to kids so they don't fail and fall behind. Third, the world of technology is changing rapidly. I used to run a survey company, I did, we developed, we pioneered internet survey work back in the mid-nineties and sold that product to trade association, professional associations, so forth. And we were sitting at lunch one day, at a brown bag lunch, and, and my staff said, it was the CEO of the company, and my staff said, Charlie, what do you think the world holds? I said, it's real simple. The world we're in, if it doesn't fit on here, it doesn't matter. Well, now it's iPads, a little bigger. Now, his kids are proficient at it. And so how you take the pedagogy and turn that in, use it in, in a way that you're maximizing technical capabilities is just a phenomenal transition in where we are in education. So in summary, the perception is, and I believe it's accurate, is that teachers are working much longer hours than previously. They're working harder. And nobody thinks that's going to change. Doesn't necessarily mean it's bad. It's good because you're changing the educational product. But the fact of the matter is, when you're living in an environment where you feel like, over the last three years, you've taken such a substantial step backward from where you were financially, it doesn't feel very good. Second, as a result of this accountability issue involving making sure the students that aren't doing as well don't fail, that they move their achievement upward, as a result, there is a shift in teaching focus to these students at the expense of the other students. Only so many hours in the day, only so many hours in the classroom. And there's a deep concern on the part of your educators that this is a problem that is going to be critical as time goes on. In addition, change within an organization always requires committee work. You've got to get a bunch of people together to figure out what to do and curriculum and so on and so forth. And this committee work demand continues to increase as policies change and that's detracting from teaching as well. And this committee work demand continues to increase as policies change, and that's detracting from teaching as well. So there is a honest, I believe, a very honest concern that what teachers want to do, which is to teach, is suffering as the result of outside influences that are hitting education in K-12 across the country. Third, there is a feeling that there is a substantial lack of trust and respect. The observation is, and again, it's my summation of the words they're telling me, is that it's created divisions among the board, the administration, and among teachers themselves. There have been substantial takebacks from formerly bargained agreements. And trust me, I'm sure you can appreciate that, you know, when I hear, I hear this all the time from employees, and I used to hear it back in my days when I bargained, is, look, when we got those great benefits, we gave up wage increases that we otherwise could have had. Well, maybe. I mean, that's a good story to tell yourself, but, you know, and I'm sure that, you know, in the annals of collective bargaining, that's what always is said. It was true in the private sector, it's true in the public sector. But trust me, it is viewed as a takeback. A few people, not a few people, a number of people pointed to the fact that sometimes the board does not appear to get along. And that's troubling to them. They want to make sure you respect each other. If you don't respect each other, how do you respect them? There is a mistrust of administration because after all, these are the bad guys that made all those cuts happen. One that really, really troubled me. I mean, I'm used to, in this type of environment, having people man at management. I'm used to having boards struggling with hard decisions and having to fight it out amongst themselves. I'm familiar with takebacks. My concern though, and I've always felt this way, and I think it's true whether it's in K-12 education or the university, or the factory down the street, or whatever it is, is that the person who is the immediate supervisor of your folks is the key player in the organization. It's not superintendent, not the director of business services, it's not the director of HR. It's the building principal. And while, and I would suggest to you that most people declared, and I asked them, what would you describe as the nature of your relationship with your building principal, as a good, bad, or sideways? Is that there is a substantial amount of respect. It's somewhat uneven. But they may, or may not be seen as empowered to effectively resolve their issues. And of course, if that happens, if an employee goes to a principal and tries to get a serious matter resolved, and the principal can't do it, one of two things happens. The employee either gives up, or they come talk to you. And when they come talk to you and you get involved, then that principal is further undercut. So if there is one, among the things I'm going to talk about, if the conclusion, and there will be a conclusion, is that we have to pay attention to this role of the principal. It has to be a primary concern and focus of what we do as we heal ourselves. And I would suggest this is going to be a healing process because those are the major caregivers within the organization. They are the key to making this work. And I quoted an observation, may not be an actual quote, but it's close, that the teachers that I talked with perceived that this used to be the district of choice, at least in this region, and they do not believe that it is anymore. And they point to the failed referenda as an indication of lack of community support. But I think that problem runs deeper. And I want to talk about that a little bit. Fourth, internal pay inequity. There is a perception, and I believe that it is somewhat accurate, that we have hired new teachers at salaries that exceed existing teachers with equivalent or greater qualifications. And folks saw this as an enormous issue that needs to be remedied quickly. And so do I. There also is a perception that quality teachers have left, retired, or are ready to leave, if they could. And they don't want to see that happen. Number five, they're feeling a tremendous amount of financial uncertainty. The teachers felt that the district made a mistake when it eliminated the old pay plan without putting something else in its place. Now, as you'll see in a minute, that wasn't an uncharacteristic response of school districts in the state. And in large part, it's because that was an inflation, it was a cost driver. But they felt that even if the lanes and steps had been frozen, it would have been better because then people could have seen what advancement would look like, that they were used to when times improved. And I think it's fair to say that most people would prefer to have continued that old way of managing pay. I think there is an understanding that that's likely to never come back in that form. But there's a lament there. They are extremely worried that all this talk around the country, the state, et cetera, about pay for performance, that you'll run to this quickly and, particularly before the new DPI Performance Evaluation System, or the one you're moving to, is implemented and proven. Scared to death of it. Doesn't say they don't, there aren't people who may want some pay for performance. It's not saying that. They're concerned that this is going to be implemented without thinking it through well. And particularly concerned if it's locked in too heavily into test scores. That that, it can be a very, if it's weighted in that way, it could be a very invalid indicator of good teacher performance. And I have my own feelings about that as well, and I'll get to it in a minute. There is not a public sector employer that we're dealing with across the state, whether it's you folks, a city, a county, village, whatever, that isn't talking about performance evaluation systems. Why? Because we haven't done a very good job of it over the years. And there is a demand for accountability. And I think it's a reasonable demand. The question is, how do we do it? And so with all the changes in the past few years that reduced teacher disposable income, and there is no question that their economic, based upon their employment here, doesn't mean they haven't taken a job somewhere else to supplement that, or there's somebody else earning money in the household. But their disposable income from teaching is less today than it was five years ago. And I believe absolutely, if I traveled around the community and went door to door and took a poll, that's the answer I would get from virtually everybody in town. Here, there, up the road in Wausau, over in Rhinelander where I was this morning, down in Milwaukee where I was Tuesday. That's what people are going to tell you. I'm not as well off today, typically, most people, not all, but most people. I'm not as well off today as I was five years ago or 10 years ago. There's a feeling that their voice is diminished. And the changes, and you would expect this, the changes in collective bargaining have really altered how they're going to have an effective voice in the future. And with not all principals seen as empowered or able to resolve issues, how do we get heard? This lack of transparency, I describe as follows, that the teachers do not seem to believe or perhaps understand what they're being told. There seems to me, and this is sort of an overview observation, that there is a disconnect between whatever the message is and how it's being received. Absolutely, I perceive that there is a major lack of understanding of the significance of your financial challenges. They think you've got a lot of money. You're just not spending it on them. And that all these resources are going to something else, and there's an argument about what they go to. But they want some attention made that's meaningful to the financial needs of the staff and to the instructional support needs of the district in terms of these workload issues that they're trying to deal with. So, the district's historic compensation system has one that is a model of long-term career focus. Pay rewards are for length of service and increase in education in some cases. Not all employees, but certainly for teachers. The pension plan supports that. It's a defined benefit pension plan. That means it pays out at the end. It's not a portable 401K. Take it somewhere else. You know, if you leave, you can pull your money out, not the employer's money. Or you can carry it with you to another school district or another public employer and plug yourself back in. There historically in the public sector is a very emphasis, a very heavy emphasis on a quality health insurance plan that is substantially paid for by the employer. Paid sick leave, paid time off, et cetera. Minimal emphasis on performance. Measured. Objective measurement. A very strong linkage between a teacher's pay plan and administrators. And then non-exempt staff pay plan not tested for internal equity or market relationships. That's kind of where we have been. I wanted to return to that to make sure you understood what it is I'm saying. The reality is, just economically, I just wanted to throw a couple of numbers ahead of you because this goes to this question of I see a disconnect coming on where you are financially and what you're capable of doing, either economically or politically. The median household income, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, an average over a period of 2007 to '11, which is the most recent years reported, in Stevens Point, is something south of $40,000 a year. In 2011, '12, the FTE average wage paid to teachers in this district is about $58,000. That's probably why it's tough to get a referendum passed. Certainly one of the reasons. Your health insurance plan is about a $21,000 annual premium, of which you pay 87% or $18,000. The employee pays about $2,600. The numbers that keep getting kicked around in the world that I live in these days are what are called the Kaiser averages. That website is kff.org. Best website you'll ever see on healthcare and health insurance. This area of the world, a family health plan under a POS plan, point of service, about $17,000, 76% paid for by the employer, and the employee's contribution is $4,000, not $2,700. That's not untypical of public employees. I had the same conversation with a city when we brought their pay plan through and said to them, I think you got to bring your costs down. Obviously, these numbers get bandied about a lot these days because you pick up the New York Times and they write something about the Affordable Care Act, and somewhere in that article will be the Kaiser numbers. Here's what the rest of the world looks like. At any time, there's an analysis of public employee pay. It always comes down to that question of, so what's the insurance program look like? We used to argue about pension, well, the state took care of that, required to pay half, to a very good pension program. And the pension contribution still on the part of the district is better than the typical 401K plan. Probably twice as good. And it's certainly a better pension program. So we're sitting on some numbers that, in our world, given the fact that we have a couple of constituencies we have to talk to, we have customers who are the children, our clients, and their families, and then a broader group of people that have to pay the bill. And if they don't adequately understand what you're offering and the value proposition of what you're offering in tough economic times particularly, based upon numbers like this, it is difficult to get a broad base of public support to spend more. So my suspicion is, we're sort of stuck with what we have. We've got to manage from within what we have. I threw in a chart on the Kaiser numbers as well for those folks who like data and charts and so forth that graphically depict the relationship I just summarized. And you can read the footnotes and all that kind of stuff. And we can argue about whether the averages are all off or not. And I've looked at public sector employees versus private sector employees in the data reports, and they just don't move much. The conclusion is still the same. We tend to have a more expensive health plan, and we tend to pay more than our private sector counterparts. Sure. There are two types, and I'm sorry for my back. There are two types of plans summarized, family coverage and single coverage. They made, in this particular graph, they made a distinction between employers that work in lower-wage jobs typically and firms that have employers that are typically in a higher-wage category. And there's a note at the bottom that says, what's the distinction? You're lower-wage workers, if there's 35% or more, the employees earn $23,000 or less. I would suggest you're probably in the higher-wage group. So it just shows you graphically what the total average premium costs are for family plans and single plans, and how that cost is divided up between employers and employees. And what the chart's showing is that if you're a higher, it would stand to reason, if you work in a firm that pays people typically more, they're probably making a more wealthy contribution to the health plan. They've got a better health plan, you know, they tend to pay more, et cetera, et cetera. Because arguably, they can afford that. And one of the reasons I find this to be valuable is that sometimes I hear the complaint as I travel around and people come forward and say, well, down on Main Street, we don't have an insurance plan like that. Well, that may be, and not necessarily, that may mean you're more in this group than in this group. And so you've got to compare some apples to apples in terms of plans. And so we're a significant employer. What's our total employment base? Well over 1,000 people. You're a major employer in this county. And you would expect that you would have a better benefit program. But even when you get apples to apples, our health insurance contributions in the public sector are higher. The other problem is, when I'm in the southern part of the state, The other problem is, when I'm in the southern part of the state, down around Madison, we have so much more competition that what is a twenty thousand dollar plan here could be a fifteen thousand dollar plan there. So as we get further north and away from the major markets, the larger markets, there's not as much competition. Now, what's really interesting is, and I don't think this is, you know, as we go through the whole thing involving the Affordable Care Act and is it working, is it not working, and so forth. Five years from now, when all that's worked out, what we're going to have is a highly mobile labor force because they're no longer tied to their employer for their health insurance. That's gonna be a big deal. It's gonna do for employees, you know, because if you're linkage, you know, if I'm a forty-five-year-old teacher with a high degree of skill, and what's linking me to my job is the fact that I've got a pre-existing condition that somebody else isn't going to give me insurance for, and now I can move to a different district and I don't have to worry about whether I'm insurable, or I want to pull my money out of the pension program and start a business, and what, we're gonna have a lot of mobility. We've had a fairly immobile type of labor force in that sense, and now we're going to be really in a market. But we gotta be on our A-game. Life is changing. So, you asked us to do a market analysis, we had done that for the support staff group. So we identified K-12 districts in Wisconsin as a comparison group. We had two groups. There's a primary group, which I believe you've used historically, of Antigo, Appleton, DC Everest, Marshfield, Nina, Oshkosh, Rhinelander, Wasaw, and Rapids. We felt that was a little limiting, in part because if you try to cut averages based upon a strong sample, you get, one that's a substantial outlier could skew that data. And so we like to see a bigger sample. So we said, well, let's add some other districts of similar size, not in the Milwaukee market, because that's sort of unique, or southeast Wisconsin. So we added into the analysis Beloit, Chippewa Falls, Fond du Lac, Middleton, Cross Plains, Verona, and West Bend. So we'd have a bigger sample. Now, I will tell you, I have looked at data from both the primary group and the expanded group, which includes the primary group plus these, and there's not a major difference in the data. I want you to know that. So here's what we're looking at. And I know you've got handouts, so I'll kind of speak to this. What the data shows, with the way we described it here, is this is you. This pair of columns here. Number of employees that fall in these categories, so there's a hundred and fifty-eight with bachelor's degrees, and the source of the data is the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, data file. You folks, every district in the state, I believe it's in October of the year, complete this very, very extensive report to the state. I pity the person that has to fill it out, but it reports, by it in detail, every single teacher, their level of experience, their level of education into the DPI database. So we obtained the DPI database and analyzed it. And then we compared this, and again, this is the expanded comparable group, and we showed you the average, the twenty-fifth percentile, the median, and the seventy-fifth percentile. And it's an employee-weighted average. What an employee-weighted average means is that we considered every single teacher uniquely, as opposed to saying, we're gonna take the average compensation in this district and the average compensation in that district, and we're gonna average the two. That would be an employer-weighted average. We wanted to make sure we had all teachers reflected in the data equally. So it's an employee-weighted average. And essentially, what you see when you study the data, if you just look at the overall number, overall, we're at about fifty-eight thousand, and the average is fifty-six. In my world, we would say you're spot on market. Two thousand dollars difference is, you know, you can change that pretty rapidly just by changing the employment mix within the district. I think it's interesting data. We leave it to you to study it and think about it. You also asked us to look at the administrative group, and so we pulled data matches on assistant principal, principals, by grade level, and then a number of members of the cabinet. Some jobs are a little higher, some jobs are a little lower. Overall, you are higher. But as a consultant to you, I would say that isn't, I don't perceive that as being a problem, given the challenges you're facing. When you've got tough problems to solve, you want a highly qualified senior group. Do you continue to increase that pay and at what rate? Well, that's a subject for a different day. And how? So, second topic. That's what the market says to us in terms of what does the data look like. So what's happening elsewhere? I mentioned earlier that in this post-ACT-10 world, and the further we get away from it, it sort of happens in cycles. You know, year one away from it, you do one thing, year two away from it, you do another thing. And you do tend to do things based upon budgets. You change policies with budgets and practices and so forth. And what we see is the further we get away from ACT-10, and probably the further we get away from Madison, the world is changing at an accelerating rate. I live in Madison, Madison's still convinced that Madison is different, and the whole world's gonna change and come back to what it once was. And as a result, like you, most districts have abandoned their traditional lane and step plans. And in making our recommendations or observations, we reviewed, actually reviewed the practices in the district primary group, and we think we would find the same thing in the expanded group. We just didn't have enough time to go out and get them as well, because that's pretty labor-intensive activity. Katie had to talk to them all and get them to tell us what they were doing, and then ask them again to make sure we understood it, and then show it to them and make sure we understood it, et cetera. And I think we've got it. So we tabled it for you in summary form. So you could see. And there's a variety of activities going on. Appleton and DC Everest report that they did maintain the salary structure, but they're administering it in a different way now. Antigo froze lanes and steps and is working on a new pay plan. Marshfield simplified its salary structure to a bachelor's and master's lane. And then people are doing a number of things and figuring out how to adjust compensation in the meantime. And of course, what I see over here, I look at is what's the status of compensation design. You got committees meeting, got some folks that haven't decided yet what to do, got folks that are piloting things. I just split the table in half, it doesn't mean anything other than that, need to get them on the screen. These are the other five in the primary group. Nina has moved to merit-based system. We're actually working on their support staff pay plan now, not the teaching group. So we talk to them on a regular basis about that project. It was very interesting when I met with the superintendent, I forgot, and I think you know that superintendent. They formed a group of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent for instruction, and assistant superintendent for human resources. And then they worked with each building principal, they took about three months out of their lives, and they evaluated the performance of every single teacher in the district as a group. To get a baseline. A lot of work. So you see here a lot of differences. If there is a common theme, it's that people are doing different things. There isn't a consistent pattern that has emerged. Everybody's experimenting. And they're in the marketplace. Starting to hire people from each other to fill vacancies, because as, you know, you go back to that earlier structured analysis of all the people, that third of our workforce that's in the higher-paid category, that group's all gonna turn over. And that group that's on the bottom is gonna grow. And if we don't have a pay plan in place so that people understand what the rules are going to be, there's gonna be increased turbulence. You want to hold on to those folks. I think those first five or six years are critical. I asked each of the focus groups, I said, you know, enlighten me, I think work in life develops a certain way. How long did you teach before the light came on and you said to yourself, I think I understand what I'm doing now and what the challenges are and what I need to do to be better at what I do? And they said it was pretty consistent, it was sort of between four and seven years. That, you know, you gotta do this for a while before you sort of get the hang of it. And if you're not locking those people in, if they don't buy into you as an employer of choice as they move through that period, and they start to move up into that second group, you know, I call it, you know, other professional teachers, that's a group you gotta lock down. You wanna, you want to, you want, not lock them down, but you literally, I mean, literally lock them down, but you want them committed to the district, fully engaged, and hopefully committed to a career here. Because that's when you're setting, then you're setting roots in the community and so forth, and that's really, really, really critical. Every public employer, whenever we do a pay plan across the state, whether city, county, we always ask the question, give me an age profile of the workforce, I want to see what it looks like. And everywhere, I was in Rhinelander with Oneida County this morning. And I believe the numbers, if I remember them correctly, is half their workforce is over age fifty, two-thirds are over age forty-five. And that's true as I go from employer to employer to employer across the state. We got a good retirement system. If people can get healthcare, Affordable Care Act, folks are gonna retire. They're gonna scoot in their fifties, because that's the way the pension system is set up. If you've been in since you got out of college, you can walk out with a pretty good pension after, you know, thirty years of service. We're gonna be replacing that entire workforce. Talk about a market. And that is, that is a huge human resource challenge in our business, is going to be staffing and finding people. We're having trouble in the economy, we're having trouble finding mechanics, we're having trouble with finding skilled people, accountants, et cetera. You know, it's a real problem. So what public employees say to me wherever I go, okay, we understand the world's changed. I want to know what the new world looks like. I signed on. I understand this is a career choice. I want to know what the rules are gonna be. What are those rules going to be? So I think that's our challenge. So traditionally, collective bargaining agreements, limited salary offers, those rules are gone. Experienced teachers are retiring, leaving a major demand for experienced teachers, and in particularly in some critical areas, sciences. The market response to this is to start bidding up pay. I mean, this is the United States of America, we know what a market looks like. So what your district did is responded with a method, a rubric for hiring new people. And the result was, in a limited number of cases, new teachers are being paid more than their internal counterparts, and we need to remedy that. The internal equities to review are positions that were hard to fill or where we had to recognize continued education at a higher level that we needed, or perceived we needed, and in order to get somebody, we had to recognize and pay for. Or they had experience that we felt was necessary, and they were going to lose money if they came here. I mean, I had teachers tell me in focus groups that they came with ten years of experience under the old rules and had to start at the bottom and work their way back up. Now, under the new rules, that doesn't have to occur, and so there is, I think there's a perception that there in fact is a greater amount of inequity resulting from this than in fact there is. But we gotta get to the bottom of it and figure exactly how many people it is, and come back to you with a recommendation on how to fix that sooner than not. So, our observations are these. That the district pay is currently market competitive for teachers. That you need a pay plan that's designed thoughtfully and collaboratively. I should have underscored collaboratively. That the issues of internal equity must be resolved. That it's critical that you put pay for performance on hold until educator effectiveness program is implemented and stable. Administrators and non-exempt staff, support staff, the pay for non-exempt staff needs realignment, I told you that at a former meeting. You've got some positions you're overpaying, you've got some positions, in my view, you're underpaying. We need to fix that without cutting anybody's pay. The pay for administrators is currently competitive, but I believe both groups could begin transitioning to a modified pay-for-performance model right away. Not in teaching, but for them, yes. Because we can manage that. We can measure outcomes in a way that we agree. The problem, one of the problems I have professionally with, and you hear this all the time, that we ought to base pay on test scores as an example, is that that's not necessarily the only way to measure performance, and I'm concerned that there'd be too much emphasis on that until we've got the other things well-positioned, such as classroom behavior, what the teacher does in the classroom, skill acquisition, et cetera, so that we've got more of a balanced scorecard of what performance looks like. And we're gonna have to go through a few iterations of this before we get there. We need to talk about it. We certainly need to measure, we need to talk about those measures. That's going to happen, but whether you tie pay to it is a different question. So my suspicion is, is that as all these four hundred districts kind of think about what they're doing, that what will come out of it is what we call in the profession, more of a skill-based pay plan, where there are acknowledged levels of professional development that are meaningful to the district and to education, and that we are then compensating people based upon their acquisition of those levels. Third, the district's share of health insurance costs are too high and should be managed to a lower level gradually. So what does that typically mean in my world? What I typically say to folks where I perceive this to be a problem is that cost shifting more onto the employees, given what we've been through, is sort of a difficult thing to do. Not particularly wise. But what if we were to share future increases in health costs, and they will go up on a fifty-fifty basis? So for every dollar increase in premium, the employee pays fifty cents, and the employer pays pays 50 cents until we're to a better balance. Seems fair. Provided we fix the pay plan. Our recommendations are these. Three. One, that we review and remedy any clear cases of internal equity by March 1st and imply that retroactively to the school year. Two, I recommend that administration form a small group. I've suggested three teachers and four administrators, building principals, teachers, different levels, et cetera, to work with us to develop a new pay plan for the teacher group collaboratively. And that we would present that plan at a board workshop in early March on a date to be scheduled. And when we bring that forward, we will bring forward the administrative pay plan and the staff pay plan as well. So you've got everything in front of you. Third recommendation, that you strengthen the principal leadership training program of the district. I don't have necessarily clear thoughts as to what those things might be, but wouldn't take long to figure it out, would work with you. We would reinforce the expectation that principals communicate district policies and initiatives with a consistent voice in their schools. That's transparency. That when you do something, it gets, it gets, the message gets communicated through the principal as the message giver. That we make absolute certain that financial capacity of the district is communicated, explained, and understood. You tell the truth, you tell it accurately, and you never get off message. Here's what we've got, here's what we are, this is what we can do. And reinforce the current teacher-to-principal and principal-to-cabinet upward communication channels so that the messages are clearly coming through and we're reestablishing voice. I, when I, when we sold our internet survey business in 2008, we sold it to Gallup Incorporated, the polling folks. But what people don't realize is that Gallup's primary business financially is in selling and developing employee engagement and customer engagement and related services involving organizational transformation. So I drank a lot of engagement Kool-Aid for a couple of years when I remained to the firm as, under my contract to help with the transition. And I believe it. I think the research pretty clearly shows that the number one, one of the, that at least is important an indicator of anything else in terms of changing the productivity of the organization, the effectiveness of the organization, is to drive employee engagement. And if employee engagement is not high, you've got deep, deep problems. And so I've recommended to you, I'm recommending, I've recommended to the cabinet, I'm recommending to you, there's certainly plenty of services that are available for doing this, they're very good, but that we systematically administer employee engagement measurement in the district on a regular basis and communicate the results to staff. So we are absolutely transparent in terms of how people see the work. And I will tell you that usually the number one measure of employee engagement is the relationship between the employee and the first-line supervisor. That's why that principal relationship is just so critical in the organization. It has to be extremely strong. People have to feel that the person who is their leader in their building is effective, has got their back, is empowered, and is accurately communicating information from the top down as well so that everybody's getting the word. And the best way to do that is to measure. There's nowhere to hide. The data says what the data says. Just has to be competent research. Well, questions you have, discussion? What do you think?
Thanks. Um, in your, your teacher discussion groups, were, were you ultimately coming up with that we have, that there are problems in the principal-employee relationships, or that the communication is not good, or something's wrong? I just kept hearing that theme.
Uh, it's because I see it as being so important. It's probably my emphasis as much as it is theirs. You know, it's my consulting impression and message to you that how critical that relationship is. And, um, you know, when you consider how that relationship has existed historically, I mean, you had a teacher bargaining group, you had a principal bargaining group too. I mean, their relationship traditionally in terms of how they dealt with you was destroyed as well. And so they're trying to figure, you know, I've said to folks around the state, you know, the group of employees in the state of Wisconsin that are struggling the most in post Act 10 are first-line supervisors. Because they had, you know, they had managed to the contract, they managed to the rules, they managed in a certain way, they had a business relationship quite often with a building steward and so forth, and in many cases, that's just all ripped out. And so in its place is a set of rules that are developed with the board, with administration, and passed down through them, and it affects their lives as well. And making sure that everybody's on the same page is really, really important. What I heard from staff, from teachers, is that in many cases, they just really, they have a cherished relationship with their building principal. I mean, it really is incredibly significant and, and positive. Now, I didn't take names, you know, I had random selection, people showed up, I didn't write down who was there and who said what and so forth. So I can't tie any comment back, I didn't want to be able to tie any comment back to a particular school or relationship and so forth. But there was enough unease about the perceived relationship and the empowerment of the building principal to cause concern.
So they don't have the power they need?
Pardon me?
They don't have the power they need to carry out?
Oh, I'm sure they don't.
I mean, is that what the concern is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, well, and, you know, and part of it is, is that a lot of what's happening to the teachers is coming down from outside the district and you're just implementing it. You know, you've got to do it, you don't have more resources, et cetera, et cetera. Well, we all got to work harder. You know, and so they, they're limited in terms of what they can do to solve their problem. But if, if they're evaluating a teacher as part of the evaluation process, the staff development process, and they don't feel, if they don't feel that they have that principal's undivided attention at the appointed hour to do their evaluation and it's done in a timely fashion, and they get the feedback and the answers and so forth that they want, if that exists, that cannot happen. And there, there were just, there was just enough anecdotal evidence to say, in this environment, I would expect that those principals are caught right straight in the middle between the board, the administration, the teachers. It's a tough job, and they need to be nurtured and cared for. And we need to make absolutely sure that's what we're doing, that they've got the information, the tools that they need, whether it's communication from the top down that's passed through accurately, that, that the teachers are educated appropriately as to what the resource capabilities are of the organization. You know, the worst situation, one of the worst situations you can have is if there's a perception amongst people that you could do more than you're doing, but in fact you If in fact you can't, that's not something you should allow to exist. That's, that creates a lot of strife. You know, it's the whole thing, tell me what it is and I'll deal with it. I'll figure it out, you know, but, but I need to know what it is. So those, the principal's role, I think, is just absolutely a critical focus that you need to have on making sure that, that they're getting the information they need, that to the extent you can empower them in power, that people are all, and I'm not, I'm not talking about lock and step and all, you know, drinking the company Kool-Aid and so forth, but, I mean, they're independent people, they, but they are the critical person, I always felt, the critical person. When I was a kid, I always saw as the building secretary and the custodian because they're the people I needed to talk to. But that principal was, was in charge. And that's the person who's, you've got to be really concerned about, making sure they've got what they need.
Um, I've got three questions. The first one is from on page six, when it's cost-cutting due to Act 10 slash 32. Basically, a lot of those cuts only happened to the teachers, didn't it? I know you're, and not the administration.
Well, it happened to everybody.
The, the administration still gets their increases. Do they, they don't have to contribute to the health insurance?
Oh, sure. You're, you're covered by the same rules.
I don't think so.
In an MS agreement.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's a big thing in, in our district. You know, they're not, they're not equal. You know, they didn't take the same cuts, they didn't take the same hits. The other one is on-
But they do pay the same pension.
Yes, I don't think so either.
The MS agreement ended on June 30th of 2013.
Right.
As of July the 1st, the contributions on a percentage basis for health and for WRS are the same.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
So as, as of going forward now from the-
Yeah, but, but a question I would have is that if you're not aware of that, is everybody thinking that that arrangement is still there and that they're getting favored treatment? And if it is, you need to dispel it.
And also the, the play pant, the play pant?
Yeah.
Pay plans, though, you know, everybody was done on steps, there's still some getting reoccurring raises in the administration that the teachers don't, they're, they're completely cut off. So again, that's the, the big stretch between the two. So, um, the other one was on page 19, is, I'm not quite sure on the income, you're using two different years, '07 to '11?
Right.
And then '11 to '12. Did you see what the teachers would have made in '07-'11? Because I took it that the $39,000 was, I guess, explain the two numbers for me.
Well, what I wanted to point out, and, and, you know, we could, we could change the, the data points that we're looking at, the, the Census Bureau data is an average of median income taken over a five-year period from 2007 to '11. That's the way they collect the data. So the median household income is reported on that period.
Teachers only?
No.
Median?
In the, in, in the community.
Okay, in the community, okay, so that's everybody-
Stevens, in the city of Stevens Point.
Okay.
The borders of.
Okay, understandable, okay.
And, and the reference point that I gave you was on average teacher pay in 2011. So I think you're, if I understand your question correctly, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but if I understand what you're saying is, if we'd have picked halfway through 2007 to '11, what would it have been?
Correct.
Fair? And I don't know.
Okay.
But we could certainly find out.
Yeah, the dates are just confusing because-
I, I think, but I think the, and, and it's a fair question, but I think you would find that there still would be a substantial difference between community-based income and teaching income. And the teacher's income is not household income, it's just for the teacher. The point I wanted to make is, is that to the extent that I heard in the focus groups, now, and, and it's quite appropriate, a feeling that, you know, our world is just really taking a hit. That's true. But I'm going to tell you what, the hit out there is bigger.
I agree. I'm paying for health insurance out of my own pocket, so don't have to go there with that. So, um, my last question, basically it's on page eight then, is you said you had three sessions with the board members and only five attended. Were these invites only, you said some phone calls?
No, no, I understood that all board members were invited. I, I didn't extend the invitation. They were, they all invited? Okay. And five responded. Uh, I had one session with three over the noon hour, and then I had a call-in session with one, and so, and a separate session with one. So five of the, of, of you talked with me about this, the rest of you did not. But I understood you all had the opportunity to do so.
There were four of us signed up for the, there were two different times, one in the afternoon and one in the later afternoon. And you and Lisa, Jeff Evil, and I were signed up. I showed up and no one else did.
That was, okay.
And, and if you still would like to, I'll do that.
I, I got stuck at work that day, I, I-
I appreciate that.
I apologize that, so.
But if, if you do-
And I can't take a day of vacation to come and visit you, I'm sorry.
But if you do want to talk, and I'll do a phone interview with you, I'd be happy to do that at any time.
Thank you.
Chris, I think I saw a hand from you.
Oh, yeah. Um, one of the things that, that isn't in here, there are a number of things that, like, go back to, you talk about the referendum. You talk about the median, median salaries, and you talk about teacher salaries and administrator's salaries. And the thing that's stringing these togethers is, it's like us and them, us and them. We're elected by the community. So if we're all struggling, and we all are, I definitely am, I know Kim, you mentioned, I know a lot of people are. And then what happens is, they look at these salaries, and the things that I hear, it's not against teachers. It's not that they don't value what they're doing, but they're struggling. And then the newspaper prints everybody's salaries and their benefits and that kind of thing, right? And it sounds like when people are out there struggling, and think about this, how many are baby boomers, right? So when I went to school, my teachers had to do nothing like what our, what our teachers do, nothing. And there are a lot of people out there who have no idea what goes on in the classroom.
Right.
So they're looking at it and saying, well, you know, what's the big deal? Look at the salary, look at what you're doing. They don't know. So it's really difficult when we have the community out there, we have the board, we have administrators, and again, it's, it's us against them, administration against teachers or staff, them against the community, everyone against each other, thinking, wait a minute, we're all struggling. And it, it's really difficult to educate everyone, you know, because it looks like it's a class war. That's what it looks like out there.
Well, and I would, yeah, I think that's, I, I, I think that's probably a reasonably accurate description. And certainly the world that I, I see day in and day out, wherever I go, you know, we're dealing with really, really tough issues. And I frankly, I think we live in a culture these days that is more about me versus you as opposed to working together. I think it's a, I mean, we could talk philosophically for quite a while about how that extends, but I would suggest it maybe as it's evident in Madison as it is in Washington DC, and we can go on and on and on. That's unfortunate. And so what it means to you, to the extent you see yourself, I mean, I'll use a, it's, you're not a business, but to the extent that you are, that's a branding issue. You know, it's, it's a value prop issue. It's, it's a teaching issue in terms of making sure people understand what it means, why you do what you do when you send your children to this school, why you need to do what you do in order to be able to serve them adequately, and why that's critical to the community. And if, if the community sees you as not working together, whether it's the board not working together, or the, the teacher's not working, you know, with you, or you're, you're locked into a collective bargaining battle, or what it may be, I mean, it's pretty tough to get people to reach in their pocket to give you more money.
Bob, you had your hand up?
Yep. Charlie, on page nine, and I'm just going to use this kind of like for reference. When we get through with all these recommendations that you're going to bring back to the board, are we going to have something like example- are we going to have something like, example, thirty-five thousand would be like starting salary, and let's say fifty-five thousand's your mid-range, and then your top would be seventy-five thousand? And I guess what I'm asking, once you get to your top, like in the private sector, once you hit the top of your wage scale, you start to get merit increases, your baseline stays the same. And I've always, and I've also experienced coming out of the private sector where to help the younger people starting out, we did the European model, where you had a lump sum of money, and if you were there thirty years, you maybe got a two percent raise, and if the young ones were just coming, starting up, they might get six. And I know for medical, if you were there for many years, you paid more than the people just starting out, and, but that was one way to attract young people. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I, the, one of the reasons that I put the, the pay distribution structure up when I started the focus groups is I wanted people to understand that there is just a major, um, difference within the group as to what people are paid. And so a, a question is, a question is, is a seventy-five thousand dollar teacher or a seventy thousand dollar teacher worth that much more in the educational model than a forty thousand dollar teacher? Is that distribution correct? I think it's a valid question. We know how we got there, and we know what the rules were for getting there, well, the rules are gone, so now what are we going to do? What are we going to put in its place? Um, I think that the notion of merit pay has some appeal, but the difficulty I'm having is that there's such a pressure to base it upon scores that, that what, and, and this is a bias that I have, is that if what you're measuring as, is student performance as, as the, as a key or the key criterion, is, is that the teachers don't necessarily, they only have the students so many hours of the day, somebody else has got on the rest of the time. And what's going on in that other environment could be as critical to what's happening inside the classroom in terms of student performance. That doesn't mean we're not accountable for what happens in the classroom, we absolutely should be, but I, I would really like, since we're really starting on this performance thing afresh across the state, let's let that play out a little bit before we start tying individual teacher pay to, um, performance. I just think we got to walk first before we start running it, and, and, uh, we've got to crawl before we even start walking. We just got a ways to go, because we don't want to mess it up. And the danger that organizations have, and there's, there's certainly a battlefield of casualties, that people's run to this as a solution, particularly in a time when there are not a lot of cost of living increases, you know, and they say, well, it's a good time to put in merit-based pay. Well, that's probably true, but you've got to have a decent measurement model.
What I'm saying, by having a starting salary, a midpoint, and a top range-
Right.
-not running forever-
Right.
You've got, you lock it in, but yet you want to justify, a good worker, they might be at the top range, and you want to give them something like a merit increase. You can't adjust the baseline because you're locked into your, your pay structure-
There has to be-
But you still reward them.
There has to be some, and, and of course, our, you know, traditionally, our way of acknowledging that was time. We said, you know, well, then people who are here longer therefore are worth more, and that was our measure of, of value. And I, and I think if there's one thing I can say with some confidence, is that it appears to me, and to Katie, that when you search across the scene in K-12 education in Wisconsin, is that paying for time is gone. It's going to have to be something else, and I don't think we've figured out exactly yet what that something else looks like. That's why I suggested that, that, and, and all, and can I think up a way? Sure. You know, I can give you a Carlson Detman way of compensating teachers, I don't think that's going to be particularly productive. I really think it's going to have to be a collaborative effort that recognizes the, the nuances of your culture so that there's substantial buy-in. Something that we suggest and you impose is never going to be as successful as something that we develop as a group, and that's the other thing, it's clear from, from the data and the observations, is that people are forming committees and doing this on a collaborative basis, they're not, they're not, it's not administration imposing, it's not, there have been interim, we had an interim problem we had to deal with, and we dealt with that, but now it's time to get through that and move on to a different method.
The key thing is you have to be able to sustain-
Yes.
-these increases.
Yes.
And you have to look at the public in their eyes, because a lot of these times you're going to have to go with a referendum to sustain some of these, uh, changes, and-
Well, that's pretty iffy. I mean, you know, if, if, if you're making financial decisions based upon the probability you'll have a successful referendum passed?
I'm, I'm just saying-
I'll give you my credit card.
Yeah.
I, I got to get home and call my wife and see how often she's been at Target lately, but, you know.
Call her, yeah.
Yeah, um, but, you know, I just, I just don't think we can do that.
Right, so then you're back to how much you can sustain to the district to pay.
Absolutely. Because, you know, in fairness to folks, they're here for a career, I mean, they don't want to sign on to a, you know, a boat that's going to flounder, I mean, you, you want it, you want it to be successful, so that's why we've just got to be absolutely rigid about financial accountability and sustainability in making business decisions. You know, every, every decision you make, you know, one at a time is probably a pretty good decision, but when you add them all up, it's, it's like retiree health insurance for retired teachers that's unfunded. You know, I've got to call a friend of mine and see how that happened, but I have suspicion it wasn't counted in the QEO. It was a benefit that could be given outside of the QEO, but it wasn't financed, and now you're having to pay that, and you know, it's tough, it's tough stuff to understand that, you know, ten to twelve percent of your teaching payroll is going to people who aren't here, and that has absolutely no positive impact whatsoever on the education students in Stevens Point. You don't want to do that again.
Jeff Presley, you had a, you had a question?
A couple of questions. Um, you used the words fifty teachers randomly selected.
Yes. Uh, we literally, we did a random table, we took the list of teachers, I didn't do it personally, um, Jenna did it, and, and, um, but ran, you know, you can do it a variety of ways, you could go down, take a list, pick a random starting point, pick every tenth teacher, I mean, that's a way to do it, it's, it's not bad, uh, you're relying upon the alphabet, and, and then you do it based upon a structure that says, we want representation in the group based upon the percentage of teachers that are in high school, the percentage of teachers in middle school, percentage in elementary, so we had a good mix. We don't want that sample weighted to any one group because they're dealing with different problems.
So it was, you took into account the three different-
Yes, yes.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
The second question is on your observations of, uh, the issues that we, or the seven themes of concern, those were your observations, correct?
Yes.
Other input on that?
No. However, though, my method was, there was a method to my madness, my method was, with the third group, I had surfaced those observations, wrote them down on a flip chart, and the next two groups that I talked with, as well as the board and the, uh, administrators and the cabinet, I bounced those off of them, and they, they survived all, all those, um, views. And I may tuned them up a little bit, I might have added some more information that sort of flushed it out in terms of what it all meant, but those themes were consistent, and people, by the time when I was done, said, no, I think you got it. So I'd ask you, do you think I got it?
I think your list would have been different if you flipped it around, if you talked to the administrators, cabinet administrators, and then the staff, your list may have been a little different.
And how would, do you think it would change? I'm curious.
Got two different perspectives, and, I mean, in honesty, if you look at the percentages, um, you know, you did, you're, just in my mind, um, your percentages are different, you're essentially taking one group, and the administrators and the cabinet are essentially the same group, so they get two bites of the apple, the only other one gets one bite of the apple.
I, I, I would suggest to you that they may not see themselves as having the same view.
Well-
I, no, I'm serious, I mean, that, that it is, that they, they have a different view of the world-
Oh, sure.
Than-
Sure.
Right, exactly. They didn't, they weren't in the room for that conversation. It, it was, it was the first-line managers who were out there, you know, doing this stuff on a day-to-day basis, and I deliberately did things in that order because I wanted it to be the teachers' observations that they were reacting to, I didn't want teachers reacting to the administrators' observations. That would, that, I think, would be, would have been absolutely the wrong thing to do. So that was why I did it that way, that was the method.
Is that it for you, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Bill? I, I just have two comments, Charlie, and then a question. Um, my first comment is, is that the cabinet absolutely agreed with your observations, um, every single one of them, and, and you know that because we were all in the room together. So if you look at your observations, everything from the, the lack of trans, transparency, the disconnect between information, um, the, the lack of trust, I mean, all of those things, we absolutely agree with that are there. It's, it's a matter of finding solutions to those and finding out, as, as you described it, the healing process, and how do we go about doing that? Um, the, my second comment is, is that, um, I absolutely agree with all of your recommendations. I, I think that it has to be, the pay plan has to be collaborative, um, the pay plan, um, um, the, the, the pay for performance needs to be put on hold, there, there's never really been a discussion about that at, at certainly not the, the board level, however, in all administrators' contracts now, effective July 1st of 2013, there is a, um, performance element to it that people will need to achieve in order to receive increases.
Good.
Pardon that, so that's already built in. But the, my, my point simply is, is that I absolutely agree with every one of your recommendations. My question is this, could you go to slide 25, or page 25?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, um, these two pages are a, a snapshot in time of what districts are currently doing in order to move from one paradigm to another.
Yes.
Okay. Um, how, how are these districts, and maybe you don't know this, um, how are these districts blending or melding the base wage-only negotiations-
Ah.
-with, with a pay plan? It, it, it almost seems as if, are we, are we dealing with a dual system here? We're, we're talking about a pay plan that will, that will say, well, you, you will, you will have a compensation, not benefits, just wage, you'll have a comp, a wage compensation system that will, um, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but you can see what's ahead of you-
Right.
-and on top of that, there are negotiations?
Yeah, and it-
Did you find any district that said, when they negotiated base, that, that were certified and were negotiating base wage, that said the way that we are going to determine base wage is the following, as opposed to negotiating a percentage? So that they blended the two by saying, the pay plan is the plan for increasing base wage, and the parties agreed to it?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I'll, um, let me jump in here, because I, I, I think what I'm seeing, what we're seeing, and, and this is based upon our conversations as well, Kate, I just want to repeat it because I've got the mic. Okay. Um, it, is, is that for those who were negotiating, that there was a certified unit, it, it's still in existence, that the tendency was to negotiate a, a base wage change, which is what the law permits, and then perhaps some discussion or negotiation on the distribution of that base wage within the organization, flat dollars, so much at each level, et cetera, okay? Um, now, as we understand, the level of permitted base wage increase under state law is relatively modest by traditional standards, so there isn't a lot of money there, period, to deal with. Um, what is clear to us anyway, because we're dealing with this in a lot of different environments, just not education, but the structure of the pay plan cannot be negotiated against law. The difference, the change in base wage can be negotiated, doesn't mean it can't be discussed, but that's different than collective bargaining to a binding contract on a move-forward basis. It's very clear that the rules adopted by the legislature, and as enforced by the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission, say that the salary structure itself is your unilateral obligation to determine, and furthermore, that pay increases in that structure based upon movement by criteria you establish are not covered, arguably not covered, in that base salary increase. So what it amounts to, and it's, realize this is a weird world, what it amounts to is that you are in a position to structure a pay plan to give more to your bargaining unit employees than you're permitted to negotiate. So, as an example, we have certified units in counties or cities or whatnot that are negotiating a base wage change, in the meantime, we're restructuring pay and putting in step plans or, um, in some cases, or pay-for-performance plans, and those pay increases, while they were, where they will influence the establishment of the next base wage for purposes of bargaining, but the increases themselves are exempt from bargaining and exempt from the limitation of the statute. Is that complicated enough?
Well, I think that's-
It is a weird, weird world, because that is not the world we're used to.
I, I think it's a, I think that's really the, if, that is one of the more difficult issues, is how do you, um, how do you do that? How do you-
Very difficult. It's very difficult, and there is, there is a school of thought that, that, because, you know, as most things, as I, I'm fond of saying, because I'm not an attorney, you know, at least this is one thing where I can get three attorneys in a room and at least only get two opinions as opposed to five, um, is, is that, um, I think there's general agreement that this is the rules we're playing under. What is, what is not clear exactly yet is, um, does the existence of a bargaining relationship in any way limit your ability to do more? And I don't think that's clear, clear yet. So, but people are saying, well, we're going to interpret it the way we think it is, and we're going to move forward, you know, and it's basically saying, if we want to give you more than the bargaining law permits, I guess you could object to that, I don't know quite why you would, but I guess you can object to that, and then we can rethink what we're doing. So I've had a couple of situations where people are currently bargaining because their contract has not yet expired, and there's a duty to bargain under that agreement, under the law, they haven't determined yet whether or not the unit's going to recertify, now that we've got certification elections back as a result of the most recent court ruling, we think, and they're saying, all right, we got to do pay plan, we're going to put implementation on hold for you until we determine whether or not you're going to recertify, and then we'll decide what we're going to do. So in all things related to whatever we come up with, there will need to be a conversation with somebody's labor council so that you're getting competent advice as to the law, because we're not going to, I'm going to tell you what we think it says, but I don't think I'd take that to the bank. Because as you know, it's a situation that is unfolding before our eyes. It would be nice to have a Supreme Court decision that would tell us with some finality what it is we're doing until the legisla- what it is we're doing until the legislature does something else, but that may be five, six months down the road, I'm told, somewhere during the gubernatorial legislative election process.
Jeff Hebel, questions?
From your experience, I see a lot of these design compensations, programs are a work in progress. Have you come across one that you thought was particularly effective, that might be a good model or starting point?
We've looked at a couple. Katie, you... that, and it's my observation based upon a long time doing this stuff, is that most work, professional work, can be understood as four stages of development. That there's that period that the teachers identified for me, when the light came on and said, I think I can do this, and I understand the challenges ahead, I would call that an apprenticeship. You got your education, now you're apprenticing. If I was at the university, it would have been, it would have been my tenure time. It's the time where I'm doing my, getting out my research and so forth, and improving to my peers that I belong in the club. Seven years on the clock legis, legally. And as I understand it now, there is a certification process for professional status as well as a teacher, and it's, I think it clocks at five years or something, people were referring to that, I'm not that familiar with it. But in any event, I think level one is an apprenticeship period. Level two is what I would call a period of professional output, that you're a professional in the business, that's when you're earning your chops and you're building up experience, and you're becoming really good at what you do. It may be the point where you go back and you get a master's degree, you're improving your education, et cetera. Maybe you did that some during the apprenticeship period as well, but that's when you're really, really maturing as a professional teacher. Level three is when you become a mentor. And probably you're dealing with those rookies, those apprentices, and helping nurture them along and bring them to the level of professional. Level four is a master teacher, or a master crafts person. You're a leader, you've got leadership responsibility within your organization, you're literally teaching others, you may have some administrative or management responsibilities within your school, you're really on your A-game. I would bet you that as time goes on, these structures that are bubbling up are gonna look a lot like that. They'll have aspects of that to it, and within those levels, there will be sub-levels that are determined based upon skill acquisition, demonstrable skill acquisition that's relevant to the work you're doing, that the district says we wanna reward that and acknowledge that with higher pay, so that there's a path. And that path is understood, and it's accessible, and the rules are clear, the costs are managed, and there are ranges of pay around each one of those levels. And so, while I don't see time coming back as being the measure of additional pay increases, you know, there were three ways to get a raise, well, four if you count benefits. An across-the-board increase, a lift in the pay plan, a lane change, and a step change. Two of them I think will survive in some form. I think it's the time-driven one that is not gonna come back, provided we put something in its place that makes sense. If we don't do that, it'll come back.
Any other board questions for Charlie tonight? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hard work and the work of your team. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening? Is there a second? Barb, roll call both, please.
Speak into your mic so she can hear.
Yes.
It is a big one.
Yes.
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 Apparently, apparently Ms. Taunton didn't come back to the table.
And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all, we'll do this next year.